Call to order the meeting of the November 6, 2019 Frederick County Planning Commission. At this time, I'd like for you to join me in a moment of silence, please. Our first item is the adoption of our agenda. There's no changes to the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Agreed.
Do we get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is committee reports. Our first report will be Frederick Water, Mr. Oats.
Yes, we met on October 22. First item was that we accepted the annual audit for a year ending June 30, 2019. The auditors found everything in good shape, no problems. The second was we adopted a resolution authorizing the issuance of a $35 million revenue bonds to fund the new water plant. The pipelines are approved. They're ready to go out for bid. The water plant, we're hoping within the next 60 to 90 days, it'll be going out to bid. The board also accepted the name for the new ball fields, which is Stonewall Park. That's what the Board of Supervisors had recommended. And then for operations for September, we had 16,409 connections. The monthly water production was 6.649 million gallons a day, and the rainfall for September was .68 inches.
Sounds good. Thanks, sir. Our next, I'll go shift over to Winchester Planning Commission Liaison, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yes, sir. So we met our work session yesterday in regards to a CUP request from Esther Lee Schneider and Associates for a flat roof and an unbroken structure, or an unbroken wall plane 24 feet or greater, and also request from E-PIC Lofts down on Kent Street, Piccadilly Street, in regards to green space. And also, we're working to initiate a zoning text amendment for the small cell telecommunications facilities in the city of Winchester, and then also we're reviewing the comp plan.
Alrighty. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
And our last report is our liaison from the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Trout.
Good evening. Board of Supervisors met on October 23. We approved school bond financing in the amount of $3,200,000 for ill or middle school. We also approved a number of supplemental appropriations, including one for maintenance and operation of Sunnyside Plaza, as well as a carryforward of unspent funds for the school operating budget, of which a million of that is going to be used to purchase 10 school buses. That concludes my report.
Alright. Thank you. Nice to have you also with us. Our next item in our agenda is our citizen comment portion. This is for our citizens who'd like to come before, speak to anything that's not on our agenda, because we do have two public hearings tonight. So at this time, I'll open the citizen comment portion. Seeing no one, I'll close the citizen comment portion. I see a lot, but no one's coming forward. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing item. And Mr. Klein, well, it's an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165 zoning. I'll let him take it from there.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is an ordinance amendment public hearing regarding landscaping, buffers and screening, parking, and requirements for certain uses. This is a proposed amendment to Chapter 165, the zoning ordinance to provide consistency within certain sections and to clarify or reduce requirements for certain uses. The zoning ordinance sections amended, and I'll walk you through each one of these, is storage facilities, self-storage, tractor-truck and tractor-trailer truck parking, special event facilities, off-street parking and parking lots, landscaping requirements, and buffer and screening requirements. In regards to storage facilities and self-storage, the proposed change provides landscaping and planting consistency regarding plant size in this section of the zoning ordinance with other sections of the ordinance, and it modifies the requirements for the screening of the use. In regards to tractor-truck and tractor-trailer truck parking, the proposed change prevents the siting of the above use adjacent to residential uses while enabling the location of these types of facilities where they are most appropriate, i.e. adjacent to major roadways and/or in the vicinity of other business and industrial uses. It provides a consistent hard-surface standard gravel parking that is consistent with the temporary nature of the use, and also provides consistency with this section's planting requirements with other sections of the zoning ordinance. In regards to special event facilities, the proposed change provides clarity with certain practices in the county, specifically that the building official with the Department of Building Inspections is responsible for determining if a building or structure existing or to be constructed is agriculturally exempt from the Virginia Building Code requirements, or if the structure requires a separate building permit review. In regards to off-street parking and parking lots, the proposed change provides consistency with the required width of driveways serving parking lots in this section of the ordinance with other sections of the zoning and subdivision ordinance, and with the county code, specifically the fire code requirement. In regards to the landscaping requirements, the proposed change provides consistency with plant size in this section with other sections of the zoning ordinance, and it further clarifies requirements that prohibit plantings from being located within utility easements, and it eliminates certain plant species. And finally, in regards to the buffer and screening requirements, the proposed change modifies what activities are allowed in the inactive and active distance buffers. It modifies the landscape screen planting requirements, amends the requirements for buffers where the land to be developed is adjacent to a state road right-of-way with a designated functional classification of interstate arterial or collector roadway, and amends what zoning districts are allowed to request a reduced buffer distance if certain requirements are met. The Development Review and Regulations Committee, or DRRC, discussed this item at their July 25, August 22, and September 26 regular meetings, and the committee supported the proposed changes. You'll recall that the Planning Commission discussed this item on October 2, and the Board of Supervisors discussed this item on October the 9. Following the public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this proposed ordinance amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions for Mr. Klein, the commissioners? Thank you. This is a public hearing for this. At this time, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to come forward to speak on this, this item of ordinance amendment? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussions?
I have one question, and I should've asked it when Mr. Klein was up. Under Article 2 for the gravel, for the regulations for tractor-truck parking, you say "may utilize a gravel surface." Is that in lieu of paving? It's not in lieu of grass, I assume?
In lieu of, in lieu of a pavement, asphalt, concrete, or other, they may utilize a gravel surface?
Yeah, it, A and B kind of may conflict a little bit. A says all areas utilized for the parking of tractor-trailers shall, and the storage of trailers may utilize a gravel surface. The next one, it says, on B, it says all paved and gravel surfaces shall be properly It would be easier to understand if it said "may use paved or gravel" in both places instead of just one, because I could see A kind of indicates that you may use gravel, which would also indicate that you may just use a grassed area.
I understand the confusion.
I mean, I understand the intent there, but I'm just wondering if we have a little loophole there that would provide too much wiggle room if somebody came in and said, "Well, you say we may use a gravel surface, but we want to use grass."
Well, we would say you couldn't use a grass surface because it says gravel surface. In our parking requirements, we don't allow any type of grass surface for any type of parking other than overflow parking used in the rural areas. So deferring back to the parking standards, that wouldn't be an option.
Okay.
We certainly can amend it if the committee agree, if the Planning Commission agrees, we can certainly make an amendment to this before we go back to the board.
I would defer to the county attorney to see if he thinks it's clear enough, if he thinks it enforceable this way.
Certainly, thank you.
Are you seeking a comment tonight, Mr. Williams?
The proposed change, if you'd like to comment, suggests it's certainly acceptable. Probably not bad.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Any other discussion? Okay. Now, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of landscaping, buffering, and screening, off-street parking, and requirements for certain uses, the ordinance amendment with the modification that in Article 2, paragraph, I lost it now, Article 2, Part 204, additional regulations for specific use, 165-204.2.4, tractor-trailer and truck, tractor-truck and trailer-truck, trailer parking, Paragraph A include the words "may utilize a gravel or paved surface."
Okay.
You may want to say "shall utilize," not "may."
It's "shall." That's right, yeah. That's, that was where I was getting.
So for clarity, we're going to use the word "shall" instead of "may." Okay? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. What we got there? Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trump, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Bolden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manure, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Chair votes, yes. This is a passes, and it goes to the Board of Supervisors for their December 11, 2019 Our next item on our agenda is also another public hearing. Mr. Klein will be presenting. So ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, one number 65 zoning, Mr. Klein.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is an ordinance amendment public hearing regarding telecommunication facilities commercial. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance to enable smaller commercial telecommunication facilities in certain zoning districts as a byright use, to codify changes from the state code creating a two-track process for the approval of telecommunication facilities, and to enable communication facilities byright in our OM, Office and Manufacturing, and HE, Higher Education zoning districts. The changes to the telecommunication facilities section of the ordinance are wholesale. They include new definitions and changes to the additional regulations for specific uses outlined in Section 165-204.19. Again, for everyone's information, our current approval process for telecommunication facilities commercial is under the zoning ordinance. These are allowed in most zoning districts, but only with an approved conditional use permit. Regardless of the height, they all require a conditional use permit. The new two-track process included in this text amendment divides telecommunication facilities into two separate sections. One is administrative review eligible projects. These will be your small cell facilities, structures under 50 feet in height, or co-location on any existing structure. And administrative review eligible projects are permitted in all zoning districts, and they are reviewed administratively by staff, specifically the zoning administrator. The second type of project is our standard process projects. Again, these are the same as the current process that we're already using, and these are, are going to be your telecommunication monopoles and towers over 50 feet in height. And they will continue to require a conditional use permit, which requires public hearings before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Again, in regards to administrative review eligible projects, they are intended to enable smaller telecommunication facilities byright in order to enable better broadband service to under areas, underserved areas of the county. This item was proposed by the county attorney and by staff, and the Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this item at their September 25 regular meeting, and the committee supported the proposed changes. Again, you all will recall that this item was discussed by the Planning Commission on October 2, and it was discussed by the Board of Supervisors on October the 9. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this proposed ordinance amendment, and staff is, of course, available to answer any questions you may have as it pertains to the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions for Mr. Klein? Mr. Oats?
We got numerous emails today. A lot of them, some of them is incorrect, but just to clarify, this applies only to commercial structures, not private structures of people's houses, correct?
Correct. It only is commercial telecommunication facilities.
And if it's 50 feet or less, if we adopt this, it means they can do it byright. Neighbors, no one has a right to chime in. They can put these up.
That would be correct. It does require administrative review by the zoning administrator, but that is correct. It would not require any kind of approval by the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors.
Anything over 50 feet will still be allowed, only with a conditional use permit, but it gives the neighbors an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not they want a 100 or 150 or 200-foot structure near the residence.
That, that is true. That is correct. Yes, sir.
So we're not imposing a height limitation on towers. We're just making the ones up to 50 feet allowed byright.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
So just to make sure I'm clear, we are not restricting any construction of cellphone towers at all in the county. We, the regulation stays the same as it is now, except we've opened it up, and for self, for commercial towers under 50 feet, they can be built byright.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
So there's no restriction of anybody's rights to build a tower under the new amendments and the ordinance we're going to talk about here tonight. This, this is really opening up and giving people an easier channel and an easier way to get a self-tower built.
Yes, sir. That would be correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a comment.
Mr. Triplet?
I appreciate you explaining this, because of the 24 emails I got, you answered it. I hope that they heard it. And I'm in Gainesboro, and I understand the mountains and all they need. I need it, because I don't even get the right service all the time. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Triplet. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open a public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak before us, come forward. If I have more than one person starting to stand up at a time, I will have you form a line. I do restrict everyone's comments to three minutes. I do not have the timer on tonight, but I have a watch, so I will be timing that. And be free, if you would state your name and match your district, sir.
I will. So David Williamson, I'm the owner of Winchester Wireless and Gainesboro District. And I'm sure enough people here tonight that would probably be willing to concede their time to me to give me as many minutes as I want, but I will be respectful.
You'll have three.
Yes, sir. So I'd like to start by addressing your comments, sir, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. The CUP process for somebody to be able to get something byright is a CUP application of $7,000. Currently, that is very cost restrictive for even a business of my size to be able to pay $7,000 entrance fee just for the right to be heard and maybe not even get anything from there. So if I was a private citizen, wanted to put up a tower more than 50 feet, the CUP is cost restrictive. Nobody can do it. So beyond that, this may be addressing commercial towers. First and foremost, it's a rubber stamp of the state statute, Statute 15-2-2316.4. The county attorney has rubber stamped pretty much the majority of that statute into what has been presented to you and to the Board of Supervisors. We have to obey that statute anyway, even if it's not in the county code, because it supersedes the county code, because it's the state code. So really, most of what's in here, we have to do, even if you guys don't pass it, we have to file it as it is. Right? So my concern is, and I'm glad we're having this conversation, because I've been working back and forth for two years with folks from the Board of Supervisors to try to get some context to this, because right now, there is no language in the county code for any district other than RA for a private citizen to be able to put up any tower. And in April of 2017, Mark Charen actually made a ruling in the BZA hearing that I was the defendant in, that found that unless you're in a RA district, no radio or television tower is permitted use. We actually then took that to Circuit Court, and Circuit Court upheld his interpretation. So part of the reason for this process is so that private citizens can put up a tower, because right now, anybody in Shawnee Lane, which is an R5 district that has a 30-foot TV tower next to their house, based on Mark Charen's interpretation, it's not allowed. And that's on record, go back to April 2017, and I have record that we can provide moving forward from that. So we need to gain clarity in the code, because what used to be a television antenna 40 years ago has been replaced by a broadband antenna. And I do drone surveys for clients out in rural western Frederick County that literally, in some cases, need in excess of 120 feet of height to get above the surrounding tree line of their property, just to be able to get line of sight, to be able to receive broadband internet, which is utilitarian service today. And I would implore you guys to consider that we need to amend this ordinance as it's proposed before it goes on to the Board of Supervisors. I absolutely 100% support that we need to get something in front of the Board of Supervisors to be able to get clarity on this for future generations and for our current generation. But it needs to be something that's realistic. I have members of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors that currently use our service. They're coming off of towers that are higher than 50 feet to get them service. Right? So we want to continue to be able to provide services to the community.
Got about a minute.
We can't do that unless we have the partnership of the entire community, and you guys are members of the community. The Board of Supervisors are members of the community. I campaigned for my supervisor in my district when he ran two years ago, Doug McCarthy, and I support local, try to support local businesses often as I can. I'm going to support all these people in rural Frederick, Clark, Warren, Shenandoah, all these counties that need internet service, that we can provide it, and a lot of other people have failed miserably to do so from larger levels. Fiber and wire line is not the answer. Wireless is the answer, and the FCC has even already ruled in that direction. And so we need to be able to be forward-thinking to realize that these vertical assets, these antenna support structures that we're here talking about tonight, are utilitarian in nature. And while some people may not like to look at them.
You wrapping it up?
Yes, sir. Telephone poles, once upon a time, everybody hated looking at them when they first went up and down the roads, and their eyesore is even to this day. But people put up with them because they need electricity. People need to put up with towers because they need phone service. Right? They need internet service. So it's becoming utilitarian in nature.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll allow that one outburst, but no more.
Hi, my name is Richard Hartman. I live in the Back Creek District, so off Meadow Road, off Chapel Road. So I live out in rural Frederick County, and frankly, I choose to live in rural Frederick County for the aesthetic beauty and the beautiful rural landscape that allows me to sit on my deck and look at, at the Blue Ridge Mountains and Massanaton, and take in that rural environment. It's kind of funny Dave mentioned about telephone lines, because as I was thinking today, you know, I'm sure that discussion 100 years ago, obviously, an eyesore, still an eyesore today when you drive down the roads, that, you know, every road has telephone poles and wires hanging from them, but it is a pragmatic thing that obviously moved our society ahead with having electricity in every home. And speaking to that, the UTEL broadband service has become incredibly utilitarian as well. I mean, my wife telecommutes. I'm sure many people in the county telecommute, and you can't do that without broadband. So I would encourage you as well to review that and review the ordinance, pass the ordinance, but maybe if we can amend the language of the ordinance, where we allow for the larger tower structures that Mr. Williamson has referred to, I would strongly encourage that. I think, you know, broadband is, it's essential to us. It's how kids do their homework. It's how we communicate with our families and friends. It's how we work. It's how we pay our bills. It's how we watch TV. It's what electricity was 100 years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. No, I got this gentleman behind you, right here. Then I'll come back to you.
I apologize. I have very little voice. I have a cold. Real quickly, thank you, appreciate the opportunity to wind up being here. I would just like to be.
State your name.
I'm sorry. My name is Rick Wita, W-I-I-T-A. I'm not from Frederick County. I'm from Clark County, but thanks to this gentleman here, I derive my broadband service from, from Mr. Williams here. Okay? So I'm reliant on this. I would just like us all to look at it real pragmatically. If some of these things take place, you're going to hamstring your broadband in your rural Frederick County as well as my house. How is that going to progress your economic development in rural Frederick County? I know what it's doing to Clark County, all right? But I know that it will hamstrung your economic development, where people aren't going to want to go ahead and, you know, I can't move there. I can't bring a business there, because I don't have broadband. I don't have wireless. That's not available to me. So it seems like without some forward-thinking, we're sort of hamstringing ourselves in economic development methods. So thank you for your time. I got to quit. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, right here, and then I'll come back to you over there.
As I was kind of thinking.
Your district?
Gainesboro.
Okay.
Sorry. As I was thinking, as Mr. Williams said, a lot of the things is that having the, having to go through, like, the license to get towers on your land, I think as a property owner, you should just have, if you want a tower, just get a tower without having to go through the licensing, because it does cost way too much to do that. And in stepping back forward, only having, you know, the 50-foot towers, it put, it would put rural Frederick County back decades probably for internet services. And as for me, for a lot of things that I do, for my emails, if I wanted to do school or anything, I need internet out there where I live, because I wouldn't be able to do any of it. So it's really, and even for entertainment, to watch Netflix, play video games, do anything just on the internet as normal, you need that broadband. It's super helpful, and ever since I've gotten it from him, it's changed a lot since where we live.
Okay. Alright. Thanks, sir. Back here. Just a second, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Tom Strulus, and I live in the Back Creek District. I'm not going to talk about the specifics. I'll let the engineers deal with all of that, but I am new to the community. I moved here last June from Northern Virginia for a number of the reasons that were already talked about, the community, the lifestyle, much better than what we had in Northern Virginia. I also knew, though, that I wouldn't have Fios in the property that I was purchasing out here, but broadband was something that I had researched to make sure. When I moved here, I left my company, and I started my own company here. And since coming to the community, I also have, I sit on, and I'm not speaking for, but I sit on the Public Policy Committee for the Top of Virginia Regional, as well as the IT Innovation Coalition that we just recently put together. One of the things that we talked about is the ability to increase broadband so that we can attract technology-based employees to come out here, and maybe mirror ourselves after something like Austin or Raleigh-Durham, all the positive parts from that, not necessarily the negative. But I think that's what most of the concern is, is that some of the language in here may not be as clear as people are looking for. I didn't read anything about grandfathering. If there's a tower that was put up and maybe long before the Virginia code changed, that the way I'm reading it is that the county could request or demand that person take that tower down for uniformity purposes. So those are some of the things that I think if we can clarify, I agree the tower height is different. Virginia writes it for all of Virginia, but all of Virginia isn't flat. So I think it's important that we tailor that to our, our environment and our topography. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. I'm going to get her right over here, because she had her hand up before I noticed you standing.
Hi, I'm Leslie Roryeze. I'm in the White Hall District, and I'm right at the West Virginia line. I've been out here in this county for over 13 years. When we first moved out out here, I think in our development, they said we could get DSL. That's hit or miss. You couldn't even get a good phone line. And Verizon, and I'm a former Verizon, would not even repair the copper lines. So we finally got Winchester Wireless. Since I've been able to get Winchester Wireless, because I've been able to complete my degree, start my master's, I've gotten a job where I'm only commuting seven days out of 14. My husband has been able to go online with Northern Virginia and do what he has to do for work. If you restrict the towers, and I know the trees in my area have grown, and they've had to redo towers and try to get neighbors to, we've cut down trees, we've done everything. You restrict the height of the tower, I have to go in a 75-mile commute each way 14 days a week. I mean, 14 days, I don't want to do that. You know, I have a 2016 vehicle with 120,000 miles on it. I don't want to run in. If something goes down, I want to be able to log in and do it from home, not make a two-hour drive. I'm already doing it at 3:00 in the morning. I don't come home till 8:00 at night. So you're going to interfere with me going to school, and I'm a handicapped person whose doctors live on the internet. So you're going to interfere with a whole lot of things for me. This restriction, 50 feet? I've got trees in my yard that are over that. So what am I going to do for internet? I supply the community. If I can't get internet, nope, none of my 13, 15 neighbors will get internet. You're crippling a whole lot of people. 125 feet, that's nothing. It's barely sticking out of the trees. I'm by the mountains. What am I going to do? I'm telling people to, I'm putting my house on the market, and one of the selling factors is I got broadband. Because they know we don't have Fios. They know we don't have DSL. Comcast looks at us and stops at a certain spot.
Getting close.
So come on, people. You're crippling this county. This county's come a long way in 13 years. It's still got a ways to go. But you're going to set us back, and you're going to lose a whole lot of prospective residents. You've got houses around here that's been sitting on the market for over a year because they think we're so backwards we don't have internet. And that's the biggest factor out here. People don't want to leave because they don't have the internet service.
Well, I guess you wrap it up. Thank you, ma'am.
No problem. Come on, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. That's, you've been very patient standing there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Donnie Hamilton. I'm not exactly sure which district. I'm about three minutes from James Wood High School. Me and my wife and family moved here about 10 years ago. She telecommutes. And when we moved, we had to make sure we had internet. So we called Verizon, did the whole thing. They said, yes, you will have internet there. We get there. There's no internet there. So we were scrambling to see if we could even keep our house with her job, tried different internet options. Luckily, Winchester Wireless was able to get a tower built about that year to be able to get us internet because they couldn't even give us internet because our trees are 120 feet where we're at. Even though I can listen to the football game from my back deck, just because you're not, you know, 100 feet, 100 miles from the town doesn't mean you don't have internet. I don't know why they don't run internet throughout most of Winchester, but they don't. So I have three children in Apple Pie Ridge as well that need the internet. My whole neighborhood is a 17-home subdivision that every one of us is using Winchester Wireless. It's expensive. It's way more expensive. And that's because they have to spend $7,000 to put a tower up and $7,000 for this tower. But if you've got to pay $150 a month for internet, you have to do it if you want to keep your house. So just for the whole fact that if you could make it to where it wasn't so expensive for Frederick County residents, that'd be incredible. Because then we wouldn't have to spend 150. Maybe we could spend 100. I don't know why they don't run it in. My neighbor's house was for sale for three months in a nice subdivision. Every time it came up, do you have regular internet? No, no, don't have internet. Everybody telecommutes. About probably 10 of the 17 houses telecommute from my neighborhood. I don't understand why it costs so much, why it's so hard to put a tower up. If you're worried about aesthetics, most neighborhoods have what they call HOAs and building covenants to where they won't allow that kind of stuff anyway in the neighborhood. So all this is doing is making money and making it hard for a private business to put this up. I don't know Winchester Wireless from Adam. So I care, I mean, I like private businesses, but we need to make it for the residents to where we can afford internet and make this a place where people want to come instead of backwoods like some of my fellow residents have said. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Before I go any further, I think maybe it would be good that we explain again, I don't know if I'm going to get Mr. Klein, it's a little out of protocol, to explain again the difference between what is commercial towers for profit and what is a private tower for that. So if I could get Mr. Klein to, just briefly, and because we seem to be maybe going down a path that, and everyone will be heard, trust me, there, everyone will become-
Yeah, I think it goes back to some of that correspondence that you all received today. We're talking about commercial telecommunications infrastructure, not private towers. That's a different issue that's unrelated to this state code change that we're trying to incorporate into our zoning ordinance.
Correct.
So hopefully that adds some clarity. While we understand that is also an issue, that's not the issue that's part of this amendment that's before you this evening.
Right. And I think, and I've got both of my senior people here ready to jump in. And I just want to add clarity to it because a commercial tower is not free to the citizens. They will have to pay still to access to that tower through some type of carrier.
Yeah, exactly. That's your-
And that's why those fees are what they are. And there's other implications. So this is for the private use. What we're discussing tonight is for a private right use.
Correct. That's your, the commercial towers are your large telecommunications providers, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon. They're using third parties that develop and build these towers. The fee is what it is because of the review and the extensiveness of the review and the process that goes through internally. It's not supposed to cut people out, but it is a different mechanism than these kind of private antenna that these individuals have been discussing.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We'll come back because it's not-
I was going to ask Mr. Klein to clarify one other thing.
Thank you.
Let's do that at the question and answer period. Let me do, let me get these people heard here. I'm going to do, continue on, sir, with the public hearing. I just thank you. I just wanted to get some clarity to that. We'll get back to that. State your name.
My name is Joel Faust. I believe I'm in the Gainesboro District. Haven't actually done this before, so bear with me. I had a couple thoughts here. I appreciate the clarification. Part of the thing that confuses me about that is, if I want to put a 50-foot tower on my property, I'm guessing the idea there is for my house to receive service from that tower, my question is where does that tower connect to? That tower has to connect to something else. It has to have a backhaul connection to some other tower, which has to be larger than 50 feet. There has to be something more significant somewhere that's sending the signal. You know, as I read this, it seems like there's a distinction here between something smaller, 50 feet or smaller, I guess for my personal use, I'm not sure, or something larger that is a monopole, very large construction. And I think there's middle ground facilities that are not accounted for in what I'm reading in this text. I could be wrong. I could be missing something. But from my understanding as I read this, I think there are some middle ground towers there. And I don't know if Mr. Williamson can speak to that as well as a business owner. But I think there's something being left out there. And it's confusing to me because the, not only first paragraph, the very first sentence, sorry, says that this is to enable better provision of internet services in underserved areas of the country. And I'm kind of confused how this would provide better services if we're actually, in effect, outlawing facilities that are currently in use, providing broadband services to a large percentage of our county. I think that's something that, you know, I think a lot of people, as they read through this and try to understand what this is about, there's some concern here that this amendment as proposed would actually require currently existing structures to be removed because they would no longer meet these requirements, given how this is written. I think somebody else mentioned the idea of grandfathering. And I think that's part of where a lot of this concern is that you're hearing, because we're not talking about an AT&amp;T or a Verizon or a Sprint. We're talking about a local business that's trying to serve the community and address what we would call the last mile problem, right? Comcast is not going to be running wires out to Shawnee Land and-
Getting close on time.
Sure. You know, out to all these various areas, that's not going to happen. Broadband wireless is the way you do this. That's the way you address this problem, to get broadband service to all of our rural communities, to bring that economic, you know, people have, you know, well-paying jobs, they can work from home, to bring all those things. Our schools are requiring internet access now for classes, for assignments, everything's online in the schools.
I'm going to have to ask you to end it there.
Okay.
If you could. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Staff Sergeant retired Jason Robinson. I live out in Gore in Lake Isaac Estates. One thing nobody's mentioned today is I have a 15-year-old daughter in James Wood High School. I have a 11-year-old daughter in FCMS. Both of them have Google Chromebooks. They do their schoolwork through the internet. If I do not have Winchester Wireless, Comcast told me to get bent. Verizon told me they don't even do twisted pair phone lines to my neighborhood anymore because it's all been damaged over the years and nobody having it. I have AT&amp;T cell phone. It works when it wants to because it tries to connect to Cape and Bridge or it tries to connect to Winchester, and it doesn't know what it's doing. I don't care about the gaming. I don't care about the streaming. I can live without those. My children will suffer if they do not have the internet for those Google Chromebooks. The other thing is, the verbiage is what I have a problem with. I'm not a smart guy. I'm not college educated. I'm a career soldier. But what I did see in there is it says the commercial towers. Well, when Mr. Williams puts a tower on property and then bumps it to another location, that makes it commercial, does it not? So I think we need to look at the verbiage, just like you said about the gravel road or the gravel parking. I think we need to look at the verbiage of this code before we go forward with it. Because hurting him hurts all of us in here and more that couldn't come tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Josh Malden. I'm in the Stonewall District. First, I had a question. Residential over 50 feet, would that still require a, just like the COP or the, what is it, the $7,000? Basically, you had to pay $7,000 upfront.
That's not a question and answer period. So we'll address that question. So if you've got a question-
That's kind of the-
Just word your question, then we'll get back to that answer.
And so that's, okay, so that's the other question. The other question, the other thing I have is if you ask most people, would you rather have power or internet, they choose internet. Period. So, I mean, it's true. It's absolutely true. And so it's, I think it's in everybody's best interest to make this whole thing as easy as possible for everybody, for, you know, try to make it as open and easy as possible, like the whole $7,000 just to enter the game, and then you don't even know if that's going to even be approved. Maybe get the $7,000 after it's been approved. You know, he's going to make money off of it. The businesses are going to make money off of it. But, I mean, is it really worth the frontline investment to even, to kind of just flip a coin whether you know or not? To me, that's not helping the situation. Those kind of things, the verbiage, the 50 feet, over 50 feet, to me, it should be you take the $7,000, put it on the back end once it gets approved, and then you, you know, 50 feet to 125 to 150 feet, because even, I mean, just downtown, just, I mean, look at the trees downtown, just everywhere here. You pretty much are going to have to hit over 100 feet just to get over trees here, or you're going to have to chop a lot of trees down. And bottom line is obviously a bunch of fiber trucks pulling up. We don't have any choice in Frederick County. If you're going to live in Frederick County, you're going to work in Frederick County, you're going to grow Frederick County, you're going to grow it through broadband. That's how it's going to happen. So that's, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. Robert Campbell, Back Creek District. And so just understanding that these are commercial towers. In western Frederick County, you've got small pockets of 10, 15, 20 houses, thousands of dollars to put up a 100-foot tower. It doesn't make any sense on the return on investment for such a small little pockets of people. And I think that's where we're running into the problem here, is that that 100, 125-foot tower isn't serving that many people. But if those are going to be cost prohibitive to put up, then you're going to have all bunch of pockets of people like I am in my area, terrible phone lines, no other internet service available. And you're just, by picking 50 feet instead of 125 feet, you're just hitting a narrow slice of the service that can be provided commercially. Thank you. Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Thanks. Chris Sweeney, I live in the Shawnee District. I'm on the eastern side of Winchester, and we have switched to Winchester Wireless because of the cost of Comcast. Coming out of the field, working in this industry, I can tell you, 50 feet is not going to get the western side of the county any service. There's Mr. Williams service, there's WaveNet, there's several other companies that are out there trying to make a living, trying to get service out there. I think if you limit these towers, you're going to have a whole lot of 50- and 75-foot towers out there bouncing signals everywhere instead of larger towers that can serve bigger areas. I just think that you're going to, you're going to have a whole lot of people mad, a whole lot of towers instead of a few large ones to service a better area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Rodney Doughty. I live in the Gainesboro area. I have two short little vignettes here. I moved here six years ago. I'd worked in the Department of Defense. We looked for a place to live and wanted to be out where we had a little bit of land. My son came home from college. In the first month we were here, his laptop had died and they replaced the hard drive, so he was downloading his music. He fell asleep. And the service that we had off of the nearby Verizon tower only covered a certain amount. The first internet bill we got was $700. We weren't used to that. We weren't expecting that. And that was all because we were depending on downloading off of Verizon system. We now have Winchester Wireless, and it's a lot cheaper than that. The second point I want to make is that I, since I've been out here, I've been subbing in the county high schools, and I know that the kids need the internet for their work at home. And that's been mentioned already, but this is from somebody who's been in the classroom, and I can tell you that those kids need that access. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kobe. I'm in Greensboro District. Two towers in the R5 district that Frederick County is currently taking enforcement action against to try to force removal of two 100-foot towers because there is no clarity in the current county code. I would like to read to you the timeline of events for both of these enforcement actions by Frederick County zoning admin Mark Sharon and attorney Bob Mitchell.
Three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. Rockwood 72 LLC, initial violation notice from zoning administrator October 26, 2017. Determination made that setbacks were violated for antenna support structure and outbuilding. Initial violation withdrawn by zoning administrator and replaced with second violation notice December 21, 2017. Determination that the building permit cannot be issued at all because an antenna support structure is not a permitted use in the R5 zoning district. Second notice appealed to the BZA, which upheld zoning administrator's determination at its meeting on April 17, 2018. BZA affirmation appealed to the Circuit Court. Arguments made regarding Section 165-502.04, which outlines permitted uses in R5 district by reference to the permitted uses in the RP district. by reference to the permitted uses in the RP district. No specific reference in ordinance to personal structures that are either permitted or prohibited. Circuit County upheld BZA's decision on September 27, 2018, finding that radio towers is not a permitted use in the R5 zoning district and ordering removal of the tower. County now threatening to take legal action to force removal of tower by the end of November 2019. The second tower is 750 Redminting. Initial violation notice from zoning administrator, December 13, 2017.
About a half a minute.
Determination made that two telecommunications structures were present on their property without a CUP in violation of section 165-204.19. BZA affirmation appealed to the court, to the Circuit Court. Arguments made that the CUP only required the commercial telecommunications structures with the towers were not zoning administrator made little effort--
I'll have to wrap it up.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thanks for your comments. Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is John White. I'm in the Back Creek District. I'm an electrical engineer and a licensed ham radio operator. The ham radio thing, not applicable to this conversation, however, it does give me a little bit of a background into the technology. These are commercial towers that we're talking about for this broadband, so this is an applicable conversation. He's, the comment made about multiple towers being required to service the same area, if we have to lower those towers down, is exactly how that would have to happen. So the height of these towers will actually improve our scenic properties of our beautiful Last is, as a relatively new homeowner in a rural district, I had to have internet access. That was one requirement for the home. And I passed on several houses that weren't covered under the coverage map by Winchester Wireless for that only reason. So if we change these laws and we, until those additional towers go up at a lower height to cover the area currently covered, the property values in all Frederick County rural will drop because you don't have internet access. Your cost of living will increase because you'll have to pay for satellite or a massive cellphone bill. So please, leave the towers. Let's get taller towers that can actually get over the treetops as a reasonable alternative. If the issue is how many, is the type of tower being telecom, there is a massive difference between a 10,000-watt commercial AT&amp;T tower and a 1,000-watt rebroadcasting broadband tower. So let's figure out the technology and make the law apply to the technology, whether it's by number of people serviced or by the wattage or some other measurement. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Brannon. I currently live in Redbud. And for the past two years, my wife and I have been searching for another location for our house. And I also run a home business that is completely internet-based. Everything I do with my business is through the internet. I'm fortunate now to have FiOS as a service. It works very well for me. But after this two-year search, we found a place in the Back Creek District, a place where we're constructing a home now. And as I understand it, my best option right now for high-speed wireless for a home and for my business is Winchester Wireless. Now, when I finally call them and I say I need service, if he tells me I need a tower that's 55 feet, that's going to be a problem. I understand you're granting us by right 50 feet and we appreciate that, but I don't understand why it's 50 feet. If the homeowner needs 55 or 60 or 80, I don't understand why there's a restriction there. And I can tell you that if you hold to this limit of 50 feet, it will be catastrophic to my business. And I just hope that you would consider that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Chad Johnson. I have a little bit different perspective on this. I'm actually the sales manager for Winchester Wireless. And I have the pleasure of talking to people moving into our community every month. We get lots of different calls for people specifically checking out homes to make sure that they can receive internet access. And that is their deciding factor as to whether they're going to look at one home or another home. So as somebody else commented, it's a big deal if we can't get internet service back to a specific location. And as a point of clarification, and it may be a question to talk with the folks who have written this up, if we have a customer that puts up a tower so that they can have their own personal broadband and then we are able, as a company, to partner with that customer to be able to serve their neighborhood so that we can get that entire neighborhood service, it seems like at that point, you're going from a residential personal use tower to a commercial tower because it's now rebroadcasting to the rest of the neighborhood. But that tower is the only thing bringing service into that neighborhood. So that may be worth putting a point of distinction or a clarification in the ordinance to put a middle ground so that you have your large AT&amp;T and Verizon, big cellphone towers that we all can see that are hundreds of feet tall in the distance, and maybe put a middle ground in for a 120-foot tower that would serve a local community to be able to bring broadband internet to them. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Yes, sir. Couldn't see you back there. No, you're not. I just--
I'm bringing Back Creek District. I'm not going to go over a lot of what people have said here. It wasn't until a power outage that I found out exactly what hollow meant. Not being from this area, not knowing what a hollow meant, on a power outage, I found out from my neighbor what a hollow meant. By restricting the towers in which you're talking about, I would lose my internet. Simple as fact. That's it. Now, I understand there's a lot of things that have to go on, but I do believe that you people all put on this board to serve the people of the community. And that's what I'm going to ask you to do, is to serve the people of the community that needs these. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I moved to Frederick County in 2015.
Name?
Etira Parker. I'm sorry. And I live at the end of Apple Pie Ridge, right on the West Virginia line. And when I went to register my kids for school, the school secretary asked me if I had internet service at my house. And my very entitled answer was, who doesn't have internet in 2015? So I embarked on a four-month tryst of trying to find service. That didn't work, that was superiorly expensive, and I was completely oblivious. The only one that came with an answer for me and tentatively for all my neighbors in the community behind me was Winchester Wireless. I know they had to cut trees. I know they had to make some adjustments and I know it took a while for them to get it up and get it going, but it is up and it is going. The mother of the children, the five children, came to my house about two months after they were able to get internet service, crying, "Thank you so much for your help. Don't hurt the community." My husband and I are both first responders and our phones don't work. I worry about my kids. When the power's out and I can't get to them, it's a lot. Help us, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Greg Beatty. I'm in Back Creek District. I've been a government contractor for approximately 18 years. Part of my contract, I provide 24/7 emergency response. I'm fortunate enough not to have a tower, but I am served from a location that does have a tower. I am a customer of Winchester Wireless. I feel like the conditional use permit process is definitely an undue burden for towers for 50 feet. I feel like that should be raised to 125. My trees are definitely in that neighborhood of height, so I would support that if that ordinance was amended to be between, up to 125. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Rick Beatty. And the 120 feet or 100-foot towers, 120-foot towers in our area would not be a burden. I don't, it wouldn't bother me any. I'd rather see a 120-foot tower than I would a bunch of junk cars sitting along the road. And trust me, they're there. So the towers wouldn't bother me a bit. That's one of my children right there and the other one also use the internet, but I've got three grandkids that all have Chromebooks and they all need that internet. Now, I will admit, sometimes one of them will come over to my house and say, "Hey, Grand Nell, what's the password?" I say, "Call your dad." "I don't know. I can't remember." But they all have to have those Chromebooks today, gentlemen. Most of you know the job I used to have and then I went to teach school in Frederick County for a while and I had a lot of my kids would have to go home and get on the internet. And they, most of mine, lived in the Back Creek District where I live. And I had a couple of them say, "Mr. Beatty, we don't have internet." I said, "What do you mean you don't have-- "We don't have internet." I said, "Okay, then we'll work it out." And I did work it out with the kids. But I know to this day, there's a lot of areas like where we live, they can't get internet. I am one of Mr. Williamson's customers and they say, "We have very good service, but we're fortunate where we are. We don't have to have a tower." But, you know, I can see if, I felt if I had to come in and get a cup off of Mr. Sharon, I'd have a hard time. I don't think it would hurt to make that limit 100 or 120 feet. Thanks, gentlemen, for your time.
Thanks, sir. I'll let this gentleman, I see him walking from the back, back there first, then I'll let get you right there.
Hi. Steve Francis, Gainesboro District. I think the unifying expectation is that the planning committee may want to look at bringing broadband into the county so that it's more reliable.
There you go.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen. My name is Chris Hill. I live in the Back Creek District. We homeschool, so our children's education is entirely dependent on our ability to reach out and bring information in and we depend on the internet for that. We have tall trees. All of our neighbors have tall trees. Without towers higher than 50 feet, we're going to be cut off. We're just not going to have access to the internet and we're not going to be able to educate our children. So I appreciate your consideration this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. This time, commissioners, comments, questions? Mr. Thomas, you had one and I'm sorry I had to--
Well, no. There's an awful lot of misinformation out there about this ordinance. This does not take any towers away. It does not restrict towers to 50 feet. If you currently have internet service, unless your provider takes it away, you're still going to have internet service. This does not change any of that one bit. What this does is it gives the ability for a commercial tower to be, additional towers to be built up to 50 feet without a CUP. The rest of the ordinance stays the same as far as requiring a CUP for towers over 50 feet. That does not change. It doesn't limit anything. No towers are being taken down. No towers are being cut down to 50 feet. That, I don't know where that came from, but that's not accurate. So anybody who thinks they're going to lose their internet service because we're restricting towers to 50 feet, that's not correct. You can build a tower at 50 feet without a CUP. That we're opening up the ordinance to allow more things to be built.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I know you folks live in rural areas. If you lived in a residential area and somebody wanted to build a 120-foot tower, you would get, the room would be three times as full as it is now for people objecting to it. So this gives more ability to the suppliers, to you folks, to build towers without having to pay for a CUP fee. You can build them up to 50 feet. Nothing's being taken away. This gives the developers more ability to build towers. They can still build a 200-foot tower if they want to. They just have to get a CUP and come in and have it approved by the planning commission, by the planning department and by the Board of Supervisors. So that's--
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Roots?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions for Tyler, if you wouldn't mind coming up. Before I get to that, the 50-foot, right now, if you're, if you have a tower 200 feet and higher, you're required to have lighting on it per the FAA for flights. In 2016, that was changed. Towers between 50 and 200 have to be evaluated by them if they're along a certain flight line, if it's a certain elevation. So anything over 50 feet may need a light on top of it, flashing light. And that's part of the CUP process is you have to submit your tower to review agencies for some of that kind of thing. Also, it goes to Public Works, it goes to inspections to ensure the tower's going to be built safe. So once you get above that 50-feet mark, there's a lot of regulations that kind of kick in. There was some questions or statements about the towers that the courts have ruled that had to be taken down. Were those brought up through complaints of neighbors, those two complaint violations?
Mr. Chairman is nodding his head yes. I understand, and Mr. Chairman, please click me on, those towers were erected illegally without a conditional use permit, which is why they had to go through the process--
Did they have a building permit?
Building permits, Mr. Chairman? No building permits either. So they were erected illegally, not following any of the county codes and ordinances, thus the reasons for the violation, thus the reasons why they had, those issues were needed to be resolved in court.
So those, for y'all, that's two instances where 200-foot towers went up illegally, but the neighbors had a problem with that height. Once you start getting up fairly high above a tree line, a lot of neighbors find it objectional. So that's why we've, and the state have come in and said, 50 feet and lower, no problem. You go above that, there's a certain process you have to go through. Now, as far as the $7,000 fee, if we want to take a look at that, maybe, you know, that's something else we can look at. That's not before us tonight, but we may consider adjusting fees based on height or something along that lines. That could be brought up. But that's not what's before us. Tonight, it's to enable the 50-foot towers to go through the process without any hiccups, that you can do it by right.
If I can add one point of clarification under the by right, it also includes small cell facilities, which have a definition that's included, and also co-location regardless of height would be allowed by right. So if there's an existing tall structure, such as a silo, church tower, any other type of tall structure, co-location would be permissible by right regardless of what that height is, even if it's in excess of 50 feet, because that structure already exists. So there's that opportunity that didn't come up in the discussion tonight as well.
All right. Another clarification would be, some people brought up, if they decide to put up, say they need a 75 or 80-foot tower for their residents to receive a signal, are they required to get a CUP for their personal use, if it's similar to like a television antenna or something like that?
That is not part of this requirement. That is separate from commercial telecommunications facilities.
So people that have a 75, 80-foot tower at your house or you want to put one up, you don't need a $7,000 fee and a CUP process to do that, correct?
Correct.
And then if Winchester Wireless or someone in the company decided they want to co-locate on that later, that would be allowed under this ordinance?
Looking to, looking to Rod just to affirm that.
Co-location would be enabled by that in that situation.
That was a little garbled there, so could you clear that up for me, please?
Co-location would be enabled in that situation.
Okay.
So hopefully that clears up a lot of the questions and misinformation out there. It's, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? Any other questions for Mr. Klein? No, ma'am, I've already closed the public hearing, I'm sorry. There's no other items we brought, talked about and discussed. I'll entertain a motion. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of ordinance amendment, telecommunications facility, commercial as written.
A second?
I have a second. I have a second. Mr. Ambrogi?
No.
Man, you'll know.
Klein, yes.
Oates, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Malden, no.
Morrison, yes.
Trublit, yes.
Dawson, no.
Moon, yes.
And the chair votes yes. I think the motion is approved. It goes to the Board of Supervisors on the December 11th.
Mr. Chairman, along with that application, I think if we could get some consensus of having the Board of Supervisors maybe take a look at the CUP process for the other towers, based on size or, or something like that, I think it'd be appropriate.
To tag on to this as it goes through it? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just qualify that, you were talking about the fee schedule associated with the CUPs, not the CUP process?
Fee schedule, yes.
Okay. So if we will, we'll tag on to the fee, we'll have the, or also address fee schedules as, for the CUP process to see if we can tag on to that motion. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is, do we have another meeting? There is no other items. So, Mr. Rudd, do we have a meeting two weeks hence?
No, sir. The 20th of November meeting, we don't have any items, and we purposely avoided that, not just to give you a break for Thanksgiving, but to allow our IT department to upgrade the Board of Supervisors meeting room. Of course, hopefully we'll come back and presentations will be sharper and the microphones will be clearer.
All right. So there's no meeting. I'll, my meeting, I'll have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? We're adjourned.